I call this meeting of workshop to order at this time. Another workshop discussion, first we will have a quarterly financial report from the recorder. Next, you will find the draft, you were given a draft at the city budget last meeting. Hopefully you have time to look that over, there's a few updates since the draft. Jessica, you wanna, we've got TCRS rate, health insurance rate, landfill expenses, and GF, parking, parks, truck, and equipment, mayor's request for funding for Westview Cemetery.
Okay, so starting with the quarterly financial report, your year-to-date column in the budget that is drafted and put inside your packet has year-to-date numbers on that, we also have a quarterly report to each one of the department heads. We have closed out the tax year for 2022. We have turned over delinquent 2021s to the Clark and Master for a tax sale, we've gotten a few calls on those. You'll notice in the budget that I have adjusted, and this is in the one, the proposed budget, but you're, if you're looking at your middle column, the estimated number is reflecting what's current for this year. So that's not what budget we passed last year, but it's what we actually think the currents are going to end up at at the end of this year, using year-to-date information. You'll notice that I've increased the first year delinquent taxes, because we have about a hundred thousand outstanding, and I would expect to collect about fifty thousand of that in this next year. And then we've lowered the ones for the older years, because aside from the TMG property and a few minor properties, there are not very many outstanding taxes back before 2020. So that, um, there's hardly, there's hardly anything left there to collect, which is a good thing, that means, part of that is we've stayed on top of turning them over and having the tax sales regularly, but also the Clark and Master, every time she's had a tax sale, she has been collecting everything up to current. So instead of just getting that, say they're selling twenty, two thousand nine taxes, instead of just collecting what they owe for two thousand nine, she goes ahead and gets everything forward from there also. So that has kinda helped drive that number down, so there's not as many delinquent taxes to collect, which is a good thing. We have good cash flow, we moved another four hundred thousand dollars over to the investment account this month. I'm not, I don't really see any concerns, I think we're gonna come in under budget on expenditures and probably be slightly over budget on revenues. If you have any questions about the quarter financials, let me know, and otherwise I'll kinda move into what changes have happened in the budget since our last meeting. We did get our TCRS rate, and it came in actually a little bit less, I think last year it was three percent, this was the actuary recommended, now we're looking at two point nine seven maybe. They want, I would, I would recommend keeping it at the five percent, because that's what I'd already calculated for in the budget, and that also is driving down any unfunded liability we might have on that. So we have consistently for the last few years overfunded that pension, just to make sure that we don't get bit with it later on and have some huge double-digit increase all in one year. So I would recommend keeping it at the same five percent that we did before, and that's what's included in these budget numbers. We also got our health insurance rate in, and they started at ten percent, but by the time Jason got done negotiating, we ended up at, at less than one percent increase for next year, so I'm very happy with that. That number is now included in your budget number also, it ended up being somewhere around point five percent higher on health insurance. Also, Jim noticed that we had taken landfill expense out of State Street Aid, and I did not put it to take out of the general fund, so that was a big oversight on my part, so I have now included that in the street department budget, which is the code forty-three-one-hundred. That department now has the landfill expense, that's not adding anything to the budget, it's just moving it instead of taking it out, I said State Street Aid, instead of taking it out of sanitation, that's where we were taking it from, we're now taking it out of general fund. And the reason for that is we don't have enough money in sanitation to meet the state's requirement for cash flow balance and still take that landfill expense out of there. So for three or four years now, we have been able to, with the eleven dollar garbage rate, we've been able to also cover the cost of picking up brush curbside for people and picking up demolition items curbside for people. That isn't the case anymore, because that garbage rate slowly keeps creeping up what they charge us for, it's crept up a little bit more to where I can't keep taking that out of sanitation, I had to move it back to general fund, which is where it used to be housed. So the next time, hopefully years down the road, when we do actually do a garbage rate increase again, when it gets to the point where we have to increase the garbage rate, we need to make sure we're including the cost for those landfill expenses too, and making sure that's in there. But that is now in the general fund coming out of the street department budget. Also Lamar and Tim have one truck that is not on the trade-in program yet, so they have, yeah, so they have moved that into their budget for the upcoming year, so that amount is in, it's forty-four-four-hundred, which is a Parks and Rec number, coming out of the nine thirty-seven improvement lines. So before that was a little bit less, now that includes the expense for a truck. So we do, while we're talking about that, there is issues with that now, we're not really able to get inventory like we were a couple of years ago, so you know, the intent of that program was every year on the trucks that have relatively low mileage, we would trade them back in and get a brand-new model year, and really never have to do any maintenance on that truck. We might have an oil change through the year, but that would be about it, we really weren't having to buy tires or anything like that, because we were able to trade in for a brand-new model, sometimes at no cost. In fact, often, generally, the rule was it didn't cost us anything to trade into that new model year. Every once in a while, if we had decals on the side that they had to remove or something, it would cost six hundred dollars or a thousand dollars to remove those, and we'd have to pay for that, which is why a lot of department has chose not to go with decals, so they didn't have to pay that cost every year if those coming off. But that program, there's just not the inventory for that. And I'm not talking about not the inventory just at our local dealer, but not the inventory any of the dealers that we have checked with. So I don't know how much we're gonna be able to continue that program going forward, because that's really beyond our control. Obviously, as long as we can, we need to do it, because it does save us money on maintenance and the initial upfront costs, we've pretty much already done that in almost every department. We've got that hard part out of the way by, by doing that upfront cost. And now you're talking about savings on maintenance and having a brand-new vehicle every year, if they have the inventory. So that's just something we have to kinda keep an eye on, I don't know that they're gonna have the inventory for us to be able to do that for all of the vehicles that we've been doing it for in the past. The mayor also asked for some funding to be added for Westview Cemetery, and I put that in the department forty-one-nine-ninety, which is general government, and it's under, uh, object code seven ninety-two, this is actually two cemeteries. I believe we had eight hundred for the Willing Workers Cemetery, which is up the very end of Chestnut Street, almost to Highway three-twenty-two, there's a little cemetery right there on the right, and that'll help them keep it mowed and things. And then the other one is for Westview Cemetery, about five thousand for that, so that's included in this number also. If you'll notice, it didn't make us go in the hole, like we had a balanced budget, we still have a balanced budget, that's matter? No, that is, we were able to increase our local sales tax by a little bit, about thirteen thousand dollars, and then the changes in the property taxes, where I think we're gonna collect more in this first year. I still feel like that sales tax number is a conservative number, because right this second, we're gonna end up with more than what I'm projecting for next year when we finish this year out. So we're still not even using current year actuals for next year's estimate, so I feel like it's still a very conservative number. Sales tax is tricky, because you know, it can go down at any given moment, it just hasn't for us, like year after year it just keeps growing, so I do think there's a new baseline, I mentioned that in the new, in the last quarterly report, I think there is a new baseline, that things just cost more now, so that sales tax number is just gonna be a little bit higher, because it's a percentage of what you purchase. But I also don't want us to get overconfident in sales tax, I want us to kinda, you know, keep that in check. I have not calculated in this revenue anything for the Red Stag Building, which is gonna be prorated at the end of June, based on how much they have built out, and I think, you know, everything they've told us, we kinda think it's gonna be fully built out at the end of June when they do that prorate, so we're probably gonna have a significant build from that on property taxes, but I haven't calculated that in. So that's kinda a little wiggle room for us, and hopefully those revenues will come in higher than what we projected, which that's always the goal, we want revenues to be a little bit higher than what we thought they were gonna be, and expenditures may be a little bit less. But those are all the changes in the budget draft since the last time we talked. You all can talk now and decide if you.
Anybody have any questions or comments on any of these things?
Is it Westview or West End or both? Who takes care of the little cemetery up in back of Rick Complex?
Jimmy Glazow, Patsy Patty. He mows it, yeah, he mows it. Got it right in his backyard.
It's a good thing he's not here, he'll ask for money for that too.
Do we have other cemeteries in town that once this gets out, they could come out five hundred dollars and move yard?
The reason on Westview, they, year after year, their people that used to contribute to take care of the cemetery has died.
I don't have any trouble with it, you know, Westview's, in and out of it, has historical value for community, so I'm not, I just, we'll make sure it's, it's both.
Yeah, it's both.
I didn't know they took care of the little one out.
The expense at Westview is astronomical. And they are, they did ask for help, say, we need some help on this.
The one thing about this is, they are a five oh one C three, but the Willing Workers one is not, so I have told them that before they can actually get that check from the city, they would have to go through United Way or some other nonprofit, they'd have to work it out with them to where we can pay the nonprofit and the nonprofit industry to do so, because we can't give money to somebody that's not an authorized nonprofit. And you'll notice there is a page in there that has a public advertisement, that lists out all the charitable contributions that we can make through the year. So if someone comes up in the middle of the year and says, hey, can you give me two hundred dollars for this, or whatever, they have to be a five oh one C three, and we have to have advertisement in the local newspaper notice when we do our budget. So I've added both of those two to that advertisement, and I just put United Way slash Willing Workers, even though that's not a real nonprofit, I put that it was gonna be housed under United Way. The one other thing I'd mentioned in my notes that I just wanted to bring up to you all, this afternoon, you all had asked us to check into the Biggs House, which John, we now have a deed on that. We own the Biggs House, so that's the first update. The second update is, you asked us to get a structural engineer to look at it, to see kind of a game plan for what we need to do. Main Street Studios, Chuck Whitehead emailed earlier today and said that they got bids ranging, or quotes ranging from eighteen hundred dollars to thirty-five hundred dollars, they recommended the person that gave the eighteen hundred dollar quote and said that they had worked with them before and they would be fine to use, so I didn't know if you all wanted me to go ahead and tell him that we were authorizing that. We could take that out of, there's a line item for downtown improvements that we haven't spent out completely yet this year, so I mean, there's enough money in that line item that we could pay for that eighteen hundred dollars, or we could also take it out of engineering and architectural fees, out of the planning and development budget, there's still money left in that budget for that. So if you are, if that's the path we wanna take with the Biggs House, we don't actually have to make a motion or anything, we can just do it by agreement unless there's some problem with it, or you want, you don't want me to tell them to go ahead with that.
What does the purpose of engineer, what's he gonna tell us?
I'll let Sam answer that one, he's probably more qualified than I am.
Basically, we want to know where it is and its existing condition, and what we need to do to it to make it safe. So based on what they typically do, Lamar, is they'll come in and they will do an evaluation on the whole structure, they'll, they'll do measurements, they'll do visual evaluations, and then they will write up recommendations on, basically, anything that they see is wrong with it, they'll note that, photograph it, and then give, basically, recommendations on how to resolve that. So one thing it will do for us is it will cover any structural liability issues that we have right now, and then an approach to, to get them resolved as quickly as possible. I've got copies of, of the work reports that they've done in the past, I wouldn't care to share that with, with everyone, so you can kinda see the gist of what we will be beginning. I'll send that to Jessica, and then she can share it.
On the Biggs House?
No, just, I was gonna say, if, if you want, I can give you an example of, of the reporting that they've done in, in the past.
Well, I think it needs to be done, I think that way we don't plot avenue to go when we get ready to do something. So why don't we go ahead and, if, if there's no problem, we take it out of what would be the best fund?
I mean, we can take it out of architectural and engineering fees unless John has some other allocation.
Does anybody have a problem with that, I mean, anybody got a problem with it?
We, we've got it in our budget for, for engineering, so.
Does that fall under the same form of demolition?
No, this, this is purely for, for engineering and reporting, for things of this, this type.
One meeting we had prior to this one, going back was, did we not say that if we got the deed to that property, that it wouldn't cost us anything, that we started making improvements on it, and then we had to do something different?
Cost us eighty bucks total.
We started making improvements on it, as long as it's set there and we had the deed on it and did nothing to it, it wouldn't go cost us any money.
Yeah.
When we started making improvements on it, then we had to file something or another to that effect, that we're making.
Oh, okay, I remember what you're talking about, you're talking about the title insurance, right? We were saying that if we didn't improve the property or invest anything in it, there wasn't really a point to getting title insurance, so. Probably still with eighteen hundred dollars, it's not worth an investment to get title insurance, but like if we did decide then that we were gonna do construction with it.
Right, and it may not, it may not ever be necessary to get title insurance.
Well, we're not gonna make any improvements, it's just gonna sit there like it is?
Well, the title insurance premium is not gonna be justified by having eighteen hundred dollar value, or even a, a value on the land as if it was intended. If we start a project to improve it, that looks like we're gonna put, you know, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars or something into it, then we wouldn't want to have that at risk on account of some title issue coming up, but that's not happening anytime in the foreseeable future.
But the, the point of discussion, if I remember correctly, the point of discussion was, we don't want to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars without having the title insurance, so if we ever move forward and invest X dollars, hundreds, hundreds of thousands, then we would pick up the title insurance to make sure that the improvement that we've made to it, someone can't come back and basically lay claim to that at that point in time.
At what point in time after this survey or whatever, are you gonna say, well, we're gonna do improvements?
Well, we'll, we'll see kinda what, what they say and put together a, a plan, and then at that point in time, you know, we will know a ballpark, you know, based on their recommendations and what that would cost, and then we'll, we'll make a determination at that point, you know, on purchasing title insurance.
We could always revise the budget too.
Well, I think that's kinda why we're talking about this now, but it'll probably have to be an amendment anyway, they probably won't come back with a study and recommendations until after July anyway, so we'll probably have to pass the existing budget, you know, kinda without anything in there for it, and then based on what their recommendations are, we can go back and say, well, we're gonna approve X amount to do this much of what they recommended, or not do anything, I mean, we don't, we're not obligated to do anything, but we definitely can't do anything like apply for a grant for it until we know what's wrong with the building structurally, so.
Okay, which brings up a question, who, uh, needs mowing down there now? And kinda a little cleaning up, what department does that?
That's for you all to decide, we're gonna have to decide now that we have any.
I get my weed in here in storage.
I had it mowed Friday. I had it mowed Friday.
Oh, you did?
I guess it's Park and Rick here.
He need mowing, so we'll mow the libraries right beside the libraries.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, that's all I'd ever guess.
Okay. I think Tim made an executive decision.
Lamar's out on the cruise.
Tim made an executive decision on behalf of the whole city.
We're gonna talk about that later too.
Good job.
Any other, any more citizens here on the yard?
Any other questions on this, or comments on any of the things we've discussed? Okay, we will have this on the main agenda to pass on first reading, also on the agenda will be Representative Lowell Russell will be here to honor the late Commissioner West, and we have invited his family, the only problem I have with that, we have Billy Wayne, and we should have honored him too, Billy Wayne was a longer-serving commissioner than Buster was, that kinda makes me feel bad.
Well, just for clarification, we did not ask the state to do this, this is just something Lowell did on his own to honor Buster, so.
I wonder if by any chance you could get a hold of Lowell, and maybe we'd have time by next week to do the same thing for Billy Wayne?
He can't get it passed through the state legislature by next week.
Maybe a later date or something, I, I just feel bad we're honoring one, and then the one that served the longest, we're not mentioning him, that just bothers me. So anyway, I'll talk to Lowell when he's here, and I think may, maybe he kinda overlooked or didn't hear that Billy had passed away, but he was also a great commissioner. We have a second reading on the fair lot ordinance, and the ordinance to correct the numbering for the administration hearing officer. We have a capital improvement plan on for a vote, we did not vote on this item last meeting, so we will need to officially pass it. We hope to have paving bids for the projects we've discussed earlier on Barcliff, Maple, and parts of Sweetwater, Water Road. The budget will also be on first reading. Finally, Red Stag has asked if there's a plan for the high mass lighting on exit sixty-two. This is not in the current T doc, T doc project, who sent in that meeting with us in there when Mullenhauer was here and some guys from T doc? And we asked them to put the high mass lighting project into that whole bid out there, you was, Jessica, you were there, so apparently they overlooked that.
They're only doing bridge widening with the current project, and I asked our local T doc person to look up that project and make sure high mass was not already included in it, and it is not.
So I guess it's up to us, we're.
So we probably do need to discuss this a little bit, because it's not a simple or cheap thing. So all we have to do to get the process started, it's a rolling grant, and they're pretty much, if you, if you apply for it, you get it, so they will give us fifty percent of the funding to put high mass lights at that exit. It used to be that that cost six hundred thousand dollars and we'd pay half of it, now that's probably a million-dollar project and we'd be paying half of it. So, you know, our, our discussion has to be, do we wanna send that letter in requesting high mass lighting and pay half a million dollars for it?
Well, maybe Red Stag would pay half of it.
I mean, we can ask them.
Yeah, because we wouldn't need it, there's no work, work there, so. Why don't we talk about that, put it on then? Or could we do it now?
We can talk about it now.
Send the letter now without?
Send the state a letter about that mess, or send, talk to Red Stag?
Both.
Well, I think once we send the letter to the state, we still have an opportunity to get pricing and find out what that will cost before we have to sign a contract, because they will, we will know that cost before we have to sign a contract. So I don't think there's anything wrong with sending the letter telling the state we're interested in this high mass lighting project, can we get estimates on it? And see what they say.
Well, here's thing two, out there on exit sixty, the high mass lighting out there costs us about thirteen thousand dollars a year to keep those lit, by the way.
It's about, it's about forty thousand dollars a year, and we pay for that out of hotel motel taxes, out of tourism, to cover that, that exit now.
Did they confirm that it was intentionally left out, or is that just something?
This is the company, the, the crew that does the bridge widening, right, widening is not the crew that does the high mass lighting. It was never taken out of it, it was never in it to begin with.
We asked them to put it in when they were doing all that work out there.
When we met with the very first engineer, long before they ever had a project or a pin number or anything, it was mentioned in that meeting, so it's never been in the contract, it's never, no, but the, and, and the people who do the bridge widening do not necessarily have anything to do with high mass lighting, yeah, so it's two different pods of money in two different groups.
I think it's important before you go and develop that intersection out there, we need the high mass light, for lots of companies looking.
Yeah, I do too, I think, how, how long of a process is it typically?
It's probably gonna take, um, we, if we send the letter tomorrow, or next Monday after we vote, if we vote on this, and we send the letter next Tuesday, it'll probably be six months before we get a response back from that letter, and then it'll probably be six months from then before we get a contract from the T doc with an estimate, like they'll have to hire, they'll have to have their engineering department put together an estimate, which that's a fairly cookie cutter project, you know what I mean, they, it's pretty much the same project every intersection they do that, but there'll be some topography issues and stuff like that that'll take them a little time to review. It'll be a year from now before we even find out what an estimate is, I would say.
We went to Nashville on the lights one on exit sixty, and met with them over in Nashville. John Duncan is the one that got us that, that grant. It was, and it had stalled over there some reason, it had just sat there, and we went over there and met with them, and I can't remember, did we have to pay more money? We had to pay more money.
Five hundred and thirty thousand dollars more.
We had to pay more money to get that thing renewed up again, and after we paid them more money, they came over here and we got our lights in. But it's a lot cheaper than it was starting from nothing. Now, that was in two thousand ten.
Why don't we go ahead and send this later where it's getting started?
Okay.
I've got it on the agenda for Monday, May first, to vote on it and actually, because we didn't advertise this as a call meeting tonight, but we can vote on it next Monday, and I can go ahead and have the letter drafted, so that once y'all vote on it, we can go ahead and send it.
Just to the state.
That, that sounds good, is that, everybody okay with that, start the process?
Yeah, I think, I think we go and get something from the state, then we can get estimates, and there may be another business or two out there by then, because I wouldn't think that Red Stag would need to foot the bill, if they would, if there's other businesses gonna be coming in getting a bit of pitch from it, so we'll look at the funding.
Well, I will say, even if you're talking about five hundred thousand dollars, probably what Red Stag would have qualified for payment lieu of taxes, like the pilot program we would have been able to give them, would have exceeded five hundred thousand dollars over ten years, like what, what, what they would have qualified for in lieu of taxes, which of course you all would have gotten to vote on, but that qualification number would have been higher than what the five hundred thousand dollars is for lighting at the interstate, so, and like you're saying, I'm expecting more things to go out there besides just them, so.
I mean, it.
But by the time it gets done, they're probably.
But I, I mean, I think we should agree with Lamar, which is gonna develop, we need that lighting out there.
Well, one of the things that Monthus wanted to get when they had Cracker Barrel, but it's hard to justify putting that kinda money into one business out there, you know? And, so I agree, to me, high mass, mass lighting says there's something here to pull off for, you know?
Plus, I mean, if we go ahead and send that letter to the state, and somebody else comes in looking to build out there, possibly then we could say we've already started this process of the high mass lighting out there.
There's the selling issue.
Okay, uh, the last meeting, I guess it was workshop meeting, I asked John to get together a report, and I think it's interesting to note how his responders have responded going back a few years to current, and I'm gonna ask him at this time to give that report.
Okay, uh, this is total number of calls, I've got breakdowns if anybody wants to see it, but just to, to start out, nineteen ninety-eight, we had three hundred and twenty-seven calls total, two thousand and eight was four hundred and fifty. We jumped to twenty twenty, we were six hundred and fifty-three, then jumped to this year, this past year was eight hundred and thirty-four. Now, the interesting thing here is, is what ISO's been re-screaming for last few years, but anyway, we had the same number of firemen in nineteen ninety-eight as we got in twenty-twenty-two, and we're running three times as many calls, plus everything else we're having now do. So it's just interesting, when I start running the numbers myself and going back that far, as to how much it had jumped, but it's, it's, it's climbing, what, it's two hundred a year, eight more, I mean, it's, and it's just gonna get worse, so. But anyway, that's my numbers, anybody wants to see the total breakdown versus medical fires, I, it breaks it all the way down, so, anybody wanna see that?
Did you have a breakdown on fires, just fires alone?
Yeah, yeah, just this past year, only four percent. Only four percent were fires.
The rest of them?
Rad sub was everything else, you know, medical calls, you know, service calls, hazardous materials, it just breaks it all down. And, and of course, I'm sure all of y'all know at this point, uh, medical calls were fifty percent.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, John. That's interesting. So, in the future, we gotta start looking at more personnel, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, and Jessica can give you more than I can, I'm in the ballpark on, but overtime and part-timers this year's went up considerably.
I'll add, too, that with fifty percent of our calls being medical calls, we have to make sure that we're getting these guys and gals, hopefully, that we.
We got, we got.
The training, EMT, and all that specialized training to be able to handle those different calls that are involved with what we're responding to.
One guy just finished the EMT, still passed the test, got another one, should be finishing next week, so.
How, how is the young supply of all this housing development? How's that gonna affect you?
It, um, it's going, ISO, which is the, the big thing, it's gonna affect it a lot. Now, we're still a few years away from it affecting it tremendously, but it is going to affect it considerably. So, we're hoping we get one more reading before we all, it should be in the file, so.
And more employees will have the ISO rating?
Yeah, they didn't say we need more employees since I, since I started in nineteen ninety-three. We wanted to have.
Which we have added one full-time inspector, which I said was super.
Yeah, that was.
We'll be stoked about it, but.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, uh, we've put on a bunch of volunteers that we might have just in the last two or three years that are certified, which helps with that total number of employees, and he gives us half credit, whatever it is. So, it helps some with least amount of money, but we're now, you know, about beyond that, so.
What would be your magical number for the next few years towards employees?
I mean, it just depends on how fast everything grows. We need three right now, but that would, that would, I mean, next year or so. Uh, which I put in grants last year, but then again this year, hoping to get those funded for at least two years. So.
We won't find out about that night until after the next year.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it'll be, it'll be August, September, fourth, I have that there.
But, okay, John, thank you for that report. Eddie, got anything to report?
Stay busy, school's coming to an end, so people start seeing us around the schools a lot in the, in the summer. That's when we do most of our training and with our personnel, you know, trying to, trying to stay in the schools. Stay busy downtown. Uh, like you guys are talking about, you know, the numbers and calls and everything going up, where our numbers have skyrocketed. Uh, fortunate to be able to, uh, qualify for a grant, and we're gonna be able to put, put a couple officers on. You know, that'll really help us a lot. Commissioner Stutz and I talked about, we're gonna try to, try to station one of them just kind of for traffic if we can. And, uh, I know that's a, it's a major concern for everybody is, is getting to and from, you know, everywhere they're heading to. Uh, just, uh, it's a busy, busy time. Everything, everything seems to be going really well, though. Getting, getting good feedback from, from how everything in the city's being operated and running. Just to, just to shadow what, what John's saying about the fire department, you know, uh, half of their calls are, there's, Mr. Richardson said, you know, half their calls are, are first responder or medical calls. And we really appreciate that, because a lot of the times we're at a wreck, you know, waiting on a, on an ambulance or something like that, and they show up and they're able to render first aid, and it sure helps the officers and, because they're, they're more trained than we are. We, we appreciate them answering those calls.
Okay, thank you, Eddie. John Campbell, what's going on?
Oh, not a whole lot new, uh, other than the projects that, you know, Red Stag's winding down. Dollar General's winding down, they're about done. Uh, I mean, they're operational, both of those are operational. There's just a couple finishing budgets, but on those projects. Um, planning commission, Monday night approved with some contingencies, the site plans of the campground, uh, rendezvous campground off Murray Chapel Road out past Tennessee Medical, Tennessee Metal Products. The, uh, biggest thing there is they're waiting on their slip permit to come back from the study from T D N A. Uh, and then also the width of that road, Murray Chapel, pretty narrow, about eighteen, nineteen feet wide. Uh, there were some concerns with the larger RVs and the turn radius in and out of the entrance to that, because there's a blind curve, um, pretty much a ninety-degree curve. And so, anyway, they've got the proper site distance that's required, um, on their plan, but they did agree that they would go back and look at widening the entrance a little bit so that those big RVs wouldn't have to make such a sharp turn and people could see that are coming around the curve, that blind curve. So, there were some, some contingencies that they were gonna work out, but moving forward, it looked like everything, you know, would be okay, so. Just kind of waiting to hear back on those radiuses and site distances, but that's about it as far as anything.
Wendy's and Kentucky Fried on schedule?
Still no word from them. Uh, both of those are ready to roll as soon as they apply for a building permit. Uh, and they know that. I mean, the ball's in their court, so to speak. The Wendy's would have to demolish the B B and T, uh, and they, I've sent them our demo permit. They know that they've also gotta get one from the state, since it's a commercial building, have to do the testing for us, this and all that. But they know all that, so we're just kind of waiting on them to get back to us. K F C, same thing, they don't have to demo anything, but they have a copy of our building permit. It's just whenever they decide to break ground, they'll send us a, an application, so kind of waiting.
Okay. Richard, how's things going with the street department? Everybody good? We put in for some bids on, we, we still not, we did?
We haven't gotten any bids yet on the asphalt paving, but, um, I did email, the guy from Rogers Group emailed back, and so I sent him the bid packet, and then A and A, we probably need to hand deliver a bid packet to them or call him or something to get it to A and A.
They told me he didn't find any big enough to do all of them.
Yeah, he wasn't.
Right, and we did put in the bid spec that they're, they can just do parts of it. If they wanna do just the Sweetwater Bonore Road patching, they can do that, if they, you know, that they don't have to bid on all the projects, so.
He said he'd do that out there.
He's kind of, we just have to have the bid turned in, so. And, and they, those are due next Monday at four, so. I haven't gotten anything from anyone yet, but there are, you know, a couple that have requested a spec, so. Hopefully, they'll turn something in before next Monday at four.
By four next Monday? Okay, Tim? When's that, when's the Ingleman Park gonna open?
The splash pad?
Flash pad.
Give me a minute, my brain went.
May twelfth, Julie.
Yeah, May twelfth.
She is the Ingleman Park specialist. She has answered the phone all day making reservations for people and turning them down for their baby showers.
Uh, May twelfth.
It is.
Yeah, we're busy mowing, baseball's going, soccer's going, softball's going. We're working on the pool now, trying to get it ready.
And the beach house.
Lamar's out, out on cruise, and I just said this.
I got something else to say, man. We've had some vandalism at Ingleman Park. They have destroyed part of the inside of the restaurant. They took a axe or a hatchet to do those specially-made collars. Shooting, just knocked them out all to pieces. It'll be quite expensive to change that. I would, Judy and I were out riding around the night before the meeting, and we rode up by Ingleman Park to see what was going on. Where there were three kids sitting up there at Pavilion Two, which is the one next to the road. And I, I sat there a minute just watching them, 'cause they were messing around. Anyway, I noticed that water was coming out of the bathroom. So, I parked the car and I got up and walked in there, and soon as I got close to the building, they said, we already don't know what happened. So, I went in there and they went to the faucet in there and turned the faucet wide open and erected. And water was coming out, and the soap dispenser was outside. If we keep on having this stuff going on in Ingleman Park, we're not opening that splash pad. We're not, we're, I told Tim, not replace anything and turn it on. If we can't get somebody up there to take care of that thing and look after it, and the private citizens to help us out on this thing, it's a, it's a total waste of time. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, I've, I've got those four kids' information. I sent the officer a brief, he told me for the meeting, and he just texted me and he got, he said there's four of them. I said he got all their information.
No, I didn't say the three when I was there. Uh, where are you gonna live with them?
I assume we'll go speak with their parents and see what we can, what we can get done with it.
Do they live close to life?
They live up near the back porch.
I'd say one didn't travel far. They were on bikes. When I saw them, I, I was up through there two after school, and I saw one on bikes and a couple others. And then Commissioner told me about that, that he had just saw them up there, and I called and started to check them, where they bring out their information.
Is there video up there?
No, we don't have any cameras in Florida.
Sounds familiar.
We don't.
Yeah, we do.
Needs to be taken.
I thought we had cameras.
Yeah, we've got cameras, this, this.
They got vandalized.
'Cause Simms had called Mark, and Mark's looking at them now to make sure and get a positive ID on it.
So, we have cameras now?
The cameras on the new Pavilion Number Three that got tore up and hacked up. We don't have cameras over there, but it's gonna be run up there later for this week.
'Cause I know when I talked to Mark, he said it'd be Friday before they got fiber optic cameras.
And that's what we're waiting on. And we're gonna put thirty-four cameras on that Pavilion over there.
And the thing about it, though, guys, is you can't put cameras inside a bathroom. So, what happens in a bathroom happens. I mean, it just comes down to the person's word as to whether they did or not when they're in there.
We can put them at the door going in.
Correct, and we, we had it at, at the city rec up there, we got them going in there.
OTM erected a sign up there on the new playground equipment, about the age limit on it. And, uh, we had some older guys getting up there on the old pavement. They tore that sign up, tore it out in the middle of the road. So, it's, it's the same bunch up there done all this damage.
It's just tough when the community's got to be the one raising people's kids for them, and that's what we're getting into now. You know, people expect the schools and the churches and everybody else to raise their own kids instead of holding them accountable.
Well, this thing about this, these kids are all underage. And, and we may not be able to do anything to them, but we should go after their mother and daddy.
Okay, so, you're be looking at those films?
Yes.
All right, so my announcements here, train car dedication would be Sweetwater Downtown, two o'clock. That'll be on, what, May the fifth? May the fifth. Train car looks good, weather real good. Okay, and the Blooms, Bluegrass and Barbecue starts May the fifth and sixth. Man Lamar and Sound be down there. There's Bluegrass picking about four o'clock at the gazebo. Call the city council, boys. Is that, is that right, Sound, with you?
About right.
Anything else, uh, come for the workshop we need to talk about? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you for being here. You have to do three?